Emily, lease is still in process. There's still some more work that needs to be done. Attorney Greenspan is working with the Archdiocese on that. So we're going to table that and hopefully we'll have it for next week.
Make a motion to table.
Second. Next up on the agenda?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Member Gailey?
Table. Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
It's supposed to be the public hearing first.
Sorry, point of clarification. The public agenda that was sent out says that the Building and Grounds Subcommittee and the other committees of the whole will be after the public budget hearing. The public budget hearing is scheduled to start at 6:00 p.m.
Do you have a post there? Why don't we respectfully ask the Building and Grounds Subcommittee to recess and then we'll open the public hearing.
Motion to recess?
All right. No, that's fine. Can you pass the gavel down, please?
Oh, sure.
Is there a list that's already been signed up? Thank you. Thank you. All right, I would like to call to order our public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. I will open the hearing with those wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the proposed 2023-2024 budget? Any in favor? Okay, roll call.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak against? We have Sheila O'Neil. If you could please state your name and address.
My name is Sheila O'Neil. I live at 200 Locust Street, also the president of the Lynn Teachers Union. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 raises some severe concerns for the Lynn Teachers Union. This budget includes nine new positions created for administrators ranging in salary from $77,000 to $180,000, for a total of $970,000. Overall, this budget contains 12 additional administrative positions for a total of 1.3 million. This amount would compensate 25 new educators at Bachelor's Step One. During this past year, we have had an unprecedented number of resignations, and in the past month alone, we've had 25, and actually it rose to over 30 today from teaching positions and therapists. Throughout this school year, we've had a significant number of positions opened with non-certified substitutes or specialists covering classes. Due to the teacher shortage, LPS will pay approximately $300,000 in oversized differentials for this year, not to mention the money spent paying educators for classroom coverage on our special MOA. This budget also contains $2.1 million for services previously paid on the city side and by ESER funds. The union is greatly concerned about the sustainability of these high-paying administrative positions and these services long-term. This budget only has an additional 27.8 teachers, 14 therapists, and nine paraprofessionals. How will LPS address the class sizes and caseload overloads when we currently have 251 and growing teacher and therapist positions open right now for next school year? We need to think beyond one school year to the sustainability of our programs and maintaining our workforce. The focus should be on our students and their needs. Direct services to students must be our top priority, not a top-heavy administrative body. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak against? Last call for those wishing to speak against. I will now close the public hearing. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Come on.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to call the Subcommittee for Building and Grounds. An audit, please.
I'll make a motion to table Holy Family Lease.
Second.
Member Gailey?
Second. Oh, yes.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
The other lease that you have on the agenda is the North Shore Community College lease as part of the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. The reason this lease is here, there is an increase in this lease due to the increase in enrollment. We are adding an additional 100 students, so we will have ninth and 10th grade next
Make a motion to approve the North Shore Community College for Frederick Douglass lease.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Castellanos, absent. Member Capola?
I'd like to call to order the Curriculum Subcommittee. Roll call, please.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Our first agenda item is the Health Resource Adoption Presentation.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Peterson, and I'm here tonight with my colleague.
Colleen, speaking to the mic. Just move it over. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just for the TV, you know, for the six people that watch.
(laughing). Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Peterson, and I'm here tonight with my colleague Helen Ash, PE and health teacher from Lynn Vocational Technical Institute for 11-year teacher to stress the importance of health education and the need for an updated resource for our middle school and high school students. With the rapid evolution of the world and changing lifestyles, health education is more important than ever and is crucial to our students' overall well-being. It provides students with the skills and habits they need to become healthy adults. As indicated by the latest 2022 Youth Risk Behavior Survey data, there is a great need for a new resource, and there have been significant changes in health education since our last resource in 2007. With this new resource, students will be provided with an opportunity to address the gaps left by the 2007 material and will have access to relevant and up-to-date information regarding their well-being. I think everyone's probably seen this before. Using a comprehensive process to review and select our health resource, we made a Health Resource Council consisting of health and PE teachers, multilingual education department representatives, special education department representatives, and PE curriculum staff, that was me, was assembled. The materials we reviewed, we evaluated several health resources including McGraw-Hill Teen Health, Glencoe Health, GW Essential Health Skills, Savas Health, and Positive Action. To ensure the selection of effective materials, a rubric criterion was created using the CDC's characteristics of an effective health curriculum, the CDC's high-quality instruction materials for health modules, curate, inquire, add, and local priorities set by our committee.
Before the vendor presentation, the committee reviewed the rubric and materials in detail. After the vendor presentation, the committee collaborated on assessing the resources using the rubric and made the final material selections. Overall, the council was committed to selecting a high-quality resource that will meet the needs of all students and is in line with our local priorities, accessible to all students, and is standards-based. The process was thorough and ensured that only the best resources were chosen for our middle and high school students. What we chose was GW Essential Health Skills for middle and high schools.
Some resource highlights. This is a comprehensive and up-to-date resource. It contains vital information about health trends, including the dangers of vaping and the opioid epidemic, and it is written by experienced researchers and contributed biohealth teachers. The content is endorsed and sponsored by respected organizations in this field, such as the American School Health Association and the American Public Health Association. The resource is aligned with the national health standards and offers scaffolds for multilingual and differently-abled learners. It also includes unique visual aids such as concept maps and interactive activities that reinforce language, reading, and science skills. The resource is easily accessible, featuring accurate Spanish translation and many options for multiple intelligences. In short, GW Essentials Health Skills is an invaluable tool for any student, and its cross-disciplinary approach in real-life connections make it a must-have for any classroom. This resource has a skill-based health education approach and is an approach that emphasizes development and application of practical skills to promote health and wellness rather than simply memorizing facts and figures. It is rooted in the eight skills outlined in the National Health Education Standards, which include everything from decision-making and goal-setting to communication and advocacy. By practicing and applying these skills in real-life contexts, students can internalize dysfunctional information and become more competent and competent in promoting their own health. This approach emphasizes the importance of relevance and engagement, as students are more likely to retain and apply information that is immediately useful to them. Overall, skill-based health education represents an important shift away from more traditional, knowledge-based approaches to health education. By emphasizing the development of practical skills, it equips students with the tools they need to make informed decisions about their own health and well-being both now and in the future.
The committee found that each chapter in this Health Skills book offers numerous opportunities to practice the skills covered within. Each skill-based activity is clearly indicated in the text with a check mark for easy reference. Engaged in these exercises will help their students reinforce and develop their abilities in a practical manner. Learning health skills is an ongoing journey, and these hands-on opportunities to practice are essential for growth. Through repeated practice, students can turn theories into concepts, into concrete skills, and they can use these to make healthy decisions and create a positive impact in their lives and the lives around them.
So in addition to this resource, we just want to emphasize the community partnerships that are going to supplement this, and these are a lot of things that we've already been doing in our health classes. When it comes to health education, it is essential to have access to as many resources as possible. That is why we are proud to announce our continued and new partnerships with various community organizations to supplement our health classrooms. Our continued collaboration with Girls Inc. and Peer Health Exchange in a new partnership with the Department of Public Health will enhance our students' knowledge on topics such as mental health, substance abuse, social-emotional learning, gender inclusivity, abstinence, consent, and pregnancy prevention. Research shows that school and community partnerships improve social and emotional skill development, leading to better academic outcomes. It has been proven that schools partnering with community-based organizations benefit from higher attendance rate, lower absenteeism, higher test scores, and better grades. Collaborating with community partners leads to higher graduation rates and improved opportunities for inquiry and critical thinking. Also, the presenters from community organizations are experts in teaching these sensitive topics and are highly trained. Collaborative educational experience between schools and the community connects with the learning going on in student classes, offering them an excellent opportunity for inquiry and critical thinking. In conclusion, school and community partnerships are critical in health class, creating a positive impact on our students' academic and social development, providing them with better opportunities to succeed in life.
Some of the feedback from the committee that was helpful in choosing these resources, the resource was looked over and picked by the actual teachers that will be teaching health, and they are very excited to finally have a resource that is updated and easily to access. I believe the unit on vaping will be very important to the LPS community and have a positive impact due to the seriousness of that issue. One of the great things about this resource is that they are constantly updating it, and there's always new information, especially because health is ongoing and there's always new information. So it's a great resource, I felt, for teachers, that it's always updating online.
With the introduction of the new resource, our health educators will have access to professional development support from the district and from the vendor. A specialized in-person training session has been scheduled for August 2023, where Mary McCarthy, she's a health teacher who actually presented the health resource to us. She will present and guide our staff through the online platform workbook and the instructor resources that will be available on Schoology. Also, an additional virtual professional development session will be held in November to provide further guidance. Lastly, throughout the school year 2023-24, teachers will have designated professional learning time and will have an opportunity to work on lesson planning, clarify any concerns they might have about the resource, and gain additional support from the district. This new initiative is a testament to our commitment towards the betterment of our students, their overall health and well-being, and the continued growth of our dedicated teaching staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Go ahead. Member Dugan?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the work that went into this. We do appreciate it. Quick question, though. Is the skills base, is that evaluative, or is that, will the kids have to, how are they assessed? I guess that's, I'm trying to ask a fancy way, but yeah. How are the kids assessed?
Yeah, there's formative assessment, summative assessment included. I actually have it on a slide if you want me to bring it up.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I must have missed that one. No, 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 worry about it. I must have. I apologize.
Oh, no, you don't have it.
Oh, I don't have it? Oh, okay. I didn't miss it. All right.
No, all these materials that...
Okay.
Go with it.
Good question.
Yeah.
I'll just read it.
Yeah, you don't have to do anything fancy. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, it's really comprehensive, the whole curriculum, and it has, formative includes the following: lesson interview questions at the end of each lesson, provides opportunities to assess the progress before moving on to any additional content. There's check-your-knowledge questions. There is vocabulary activities throughout, thinking critically activities for summative. There's, remember the menu? So they can pick all sorts of appetizer, main course, dessert, and it's based on multiple intelligences, so there's just all sorts of different types of assessments throughout for every chapter in the instructor resources portion. There's so much for assessment.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Questions? So I had a, oh, Member Gailey, go ahead.
Great presentation. I just want to make clear that for all the health teachers, before we put this in, there will be professional development, and it will be supported throughout the year.
Absolutely, yes. We actually already have it scheduled with the vendor.
I saw that, but I want to, I'm reiterating. I want to make sure that this gets done because of last year's little snag.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I just had a quick question because you gave us the middle and high school, and I didn't see an elementary school health. So could you talk about why you're not presenting on elementary school health?
I wish I was. Actually, this is something that I have been talking about a lot lately. I feel like our elementary students, just from the Youth Risk Survey data, the age of onset for so many issues was like 11 years old, which is really concerning. So I truly believe that, I think, moving forward, we should have health education in elementary schools, and I've actually been working with Girls Inc. to maybe pilot something in one of the elementary schools this coming year, collecting data and seeing how that goes. So that's something that I really would like to do.
So something for the future?
For the future.
Okay, thank you. Now I understand why it's not in there. Any other? Member Dugan?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to accept GW Essential Health Skills for middle and high school.
Second.
Roll call, please. Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Move it to the full committee.
Oh, well, and move it to the full committee. Yes, that's implied.
Thank you, ladies.
Our next agenda item is a presentation. Are we combining middle and high school chemistry, or are we going to do them separately?
They'll be two separate.
Okay, so are we starting with middle or high school?
Starting with middle school.
Middle school chemistry, no, sorry, middle school science. Take us away.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Leah Seldis. I'm the Assistant Director of Science, and I'm thrilled to be here tonight with Emily Dunleavy, who is a science teacher at Thurgood Marshall Middle School. I will give her a moment to introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Emily Dunleavy. I'm a seventh-grade science teacher at Thurgood Marshall Middle School and an active member on the Middle School Science Curriculum Council.
The purpose of our presentation is to update you on the progress of the Middle School Science Curriculum Council throughout the past school year, our plans to pursue a pilot of the Open SciEd curriculum during school year 23-24, and potential next steps for the Middle School Science program in the coming years. Open SciEd is a full, open-source middle school science curriculum that just passed Ed Reports review this past February and meets expectations for high-quality instructional This visual provides an overview of the context and work that has led to the interest in the pilot. The blue arrows represent district science leadership teams, and the text below outlines some of the team's work. I will take a moment to briefly talk through each component of the visual. As you are aware, the LPS Pre-K through 12 Science Strategic Plan is a five-year plan for addressing the various needs in LPS Pre-K through 12 Science moving forward and ultimately supporting student success in science. The plan is grounded in a vision of equitable access to high-quality science education for our historically marginalized students and acknowledges the role of high-quality instructional materials in making progress towards this vision. Throughout this past school year, the Secondary Science PLC, consisting of science department heads and lead teachers, synthesized current research in science education within the context of the rich diversity and specific needs of Lynn Public Schools. Six characteristics of excellent science instruction shown here were identified and Similar work has been done by the Pre-K through 12 High Quality Science Instructional Materials Advisory Committee to identify and define characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials, also shown here, in order to inform the science resource evaluation and selection process for LPS science. Finally, these leadership teams have informed the work of the Middle School Science Curriculum Council throughout this past school year, school year 22-23, which will be the focus of the remainder of the presentation. The Middle School Science Curriculum Council was established in summer 2022 with the overarching goal of establishing and conducting quality reviews of the Middle School Science curriculum program, including instructional materials, lab materials, and educator professional development opportunities, and identifying and acting on next steps. Throughout summer 2022, the council engaged in data analysis and collaborative learning related to the characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials in order to develop an action plan for school year 22-23. The goal of the action plan focused on revising the current LPS middle school science scope and sequence, which involved prioritizing standards and reviewing exemplars of high-quality curricular resources, including Open SciEd. Some of the evidence that supported this goal include the fact that there are 73 middle school science and technology engineering standards that are eligible to be assessed on the Grade 8 MCAS. Seven and three. Lot. While the number of English learners in LPS continues to grow at a rate that is greater than any other comparable district, the largest opportunity gap in average scale score on the LPS Grade 8 STE MCAS has been between the L and non-L subgroups. Finally, in school year 21-22, so not this past year, but the year before, a survey was sent to all LPS science teachers related to top areas of need at each grade span. Eighteen middle school science teachers responded, and consumable materials for activities in labs and materials to support differentiated instruction were identified as the top two areas of need. While following the action plan throughout the past school year, the council explored the Open SciEd curriculum program. As you can see from this slide, the characteristics, pedagogy, and instructional vision of the Open SciEd curriculum align with the characteristics of excellent instruction and high-quality science instructional materials as defined by LPS science leadership teams. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Emily to share a bit about the council's exploration of the Open SciEd units.
As part of the council's exploration, council members, myself included, tried Open SciEd resources like a lesson, lab, or simulation with our classes. We then compiled feedback and compared this to the four characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials. According to the council's review, the Open SciEd resources showed promise in all four characteristics, which has prompted us in the decision to pursue a thorough pilot unit next year.
The purpose of the pilot is to determine the extent to which the Open SciEd curriculum units and resources will be incorporated into the revised LPS middle school science and technology engineering scope and sequence and identify next steps and needs moving forward. The pilot process will give us the opportunity to determine how well the curriculum supports equitable access for English learners and students with disabilities, evaluate the differentiation supports, and assess the feasibility and sustainability of science materials' access and cost. Ten to 15 middle school science teachers will participate in the pilot district-wide, and each teacher will implement one of the Open SciEd units. Materials kits will support all class sections with hands-on investigations. Pilot teachers will participate in a four-day professional development workshop in August to support their implementation of the unit. The workshop is being provided specifically for Lynn educators and facilitated by leaders from WPI's STEM Education Center, which is a certified Open SciEd PD provider. from WPI's STEM Education Center, which is a certified Open Saiad PD provider. Teachers will receive a stipend and PDPs from DESI. Throughout school year 2324, pilot teachers will complete feedback surveys related to unit implementation, compile student assessment samples, and allow classroom visits to support the evaluation of the pilot. Department meetings and PLCs will be used to support implementation planning and feedback collection when possible. Middle School Science Curriculum Council meetings throughout this coming summer and school year 2324 will be focused on pilot implementation and evaluation and identifying needs and next steps. Depending on the outcome of the pilot evaluation, this timeline shows the potential long-term outlook of full implementation of the Open Saiad curriculum units and the revised LPS middle school science scope and sequence. Following the pilot year, which is the first column on the left there, the proposal would be that all middle school science teachers implement two Open Saiad units before a full Grade Six implementation in school year 2526, moving toward full implementation across Grade Six through Eight in school year 2728. We are very excited about the next steps for middle school science in the Lynn Public Schools, and I would like to ask Emily to share a bit about her experiences participating on the council.
This council has been very productive and beneficial to work on with colleagues across grade levels six through eight and school buildings. Here is some feedback from members of the council. The first quote is mine and reads, "My biggest takeaway is remembering that the curriculum is student-centered. It needs to make sense to them thematically. So often, we, the teachers, get lost in teaching these discrete units. We lose the theme and the idea that our standards need to be cycling and building off one another. My colleagues and I look forward to further experimenting with Open Saiad as it shows potential in meeting our students' needs while also addressing the issue of our current scope and sequence lacking relevant themes in our students' lives."
Thank you, Emily, and thank you all for your time. Are there any questions?
Member Gaetley.
I didn't know if we were doing each one at a time. We're going to do all of them together. So on this, one thing I want to point out to our administration is that since I got on to this committee, I've been asking about science lab materials and instruction for our students because of my past experience as a science teacher and having to go and buy all the materials that I needed to make it fun and interesting and student-centered based. That's what they love about your class, and that's why they run to your class, so that they can be involved in as you add the concept, so that concept and the image of what they've done connects, and then you have a true learning in my part, my perspective. So I just want to make sure that teachers are going to be getting PDPs for going to professional development and that we'll have to figure out a way to get those supplies because I know how needed they are.
Thank you. I'll speak to that just a little bit. So they, teachers, pilot teachers will be receiving PDPs for their participation in the August pilot PD workshop, as well as a stipend through DESI. The, I'm in the process of getting orders together for the materials kits for the pilot units. So every single pilot teacher will have a materials kit for the coming year. Thank you for elevating that important point about hands-on materials access.
So when we have this pilot, I see your timeline for adding, but what about like, I wonder about the other science teachers in the buildings or being able to do something that's the student-centered, something that they can get the supplies as well. Everyone needs it.
Yeah. I'll clarify here, too, so that after that pilot year, the next years, again, based on how the evaluation of the pilot goes, we would then be supporting all teachers with those materials access and those kits. So it's just the pilot year that it's the pilot teachers, but moving forward, it would be.
A bit successful.
Yep, exactly, as it's implemented. And, you know, I think that access to hands-on science materials is crucial for high-quality science instruction and high-quality science education, and that is something that I'm thinking about K through 12 is a sustainable materials access plan. And both of these, kind of this presentation, as well as the high school one coming up, lay some foundation to get us to that point. So we'll be assessing the feasibility of materials access. You know, we're working with, looking at Carolina as one of our vendors for the materials kits, and we are going to evaluate those kits, what's in them, how it's working for teachers, as well as kind of costs and sustainability moving forward. Thank you.
Yes, Member Capola.
And when you say piling, are you specific schools or across the district?
It's going to be across the district, and there'll be some teachers at each grade level, so some Grade Six, some Grade Seven, and some Grade Eight. Each teacher piloting one unit.
Okay. So every one of the secondaries, the middle schools will, will have.
Yeah, it's across.
The experience of it. Okay.
Yep. Good question.
Yes, Member Dugan.
Just a question of clarification. Have the teachers been chosen that are going to pilot yet, or are we in that process of?
So they, so they have, I offered it up to the council members first, who were kind of participated in the decision-making process. Then I reached out to, you know, building leaders to ask for recommendations for additional teachers, and then there were some extra spaces left, so it is open. So middle school science teachers right now can contact me if they're interested in participating in the pilot because we do have extra spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the pilot of the Open Saiad as a middle school science curriculum.
Second.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
And move it to the full committee.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on now to high school.
I'm just going to switch the presentation.
Yep.
There is absolutely nothing he owns that doesn't have a fish or a jellyfish.
Oh, marine biology.
Thank you again for your time. I am excited to be here tonight with Dave Winchester, who is a member of the High School Science Curriculum Council, and I'll give a moment to introduce himself before we dive into the presentation.
Okay, I'm Dave Winchester. This is year 17 at Lynn Class School High School. I've taught everything, the easy way to say it today, when I was talking to a, I've taught every science except for chemistry, and I told them 17 years ago I'd never wanted to teach chemistry, and they kept their word. And primarily marine biology, also biology, then environmental science at the AP level, and now I've kind of become this earth science niche, and it was because the next-generation science standards were unpacked and we prioritized, and then we spent the last year looking at the resources. So Leah's done a lot of hard work with our council. We did physics, chemistry, and earth science, so she has a heavy lift. Biology is good because of the MCAS. That one was tackled first, and now she's moving on to the next big three, and then we hope to move on to elective sciences in the future.
Thanks, Dave. Okay. So the purpose of this presentation is to request your approval on resources for our high school chemistry, physics, and earth science courses that have been thoroughly evaluated by the LPS High School Science Curriculum Council. This visual represents an overview of the context that led to our decision to pursue new curricular resources for our high school chemistry, physics, and earth science courses. The context is grounded in the LPS pre-K through 12 Science Strategic Plan, characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials, and LPS science-specific data. We will touch on each of these briefly throughout this presentation. I have shared details and updates about the development of the five-year LPS pre-K through 12 Science Strategic Plan at previous school committee meetings. The information on this slide is only a snapshot of the full comprehensive plan, but it highlights how this plan connects to the decision to pursue resource adoption. The plan is grounded in a vision of equitable access to high-quality science education for our historically marginalized students and acknowledges the role of high-quality instructional materials in making progress towards that vision. The two related strategic initiatives shown on this slide are directly related to our high school science resource adoptions. As you may be aware, Ed Reports is an independent nonprofit designed to increase the capacity of administrators and educators to seek, identify, and utilize the highest quality instructional materials. Ed Reports educator-led review process and evaluation criteria focus on standards alignment, coherence, and scope, and teacher usability. As of June 8th of this year, Ed Reports had reviewed a total of 23 K through 12 science curricular resources. Three out of the 23 reviews were in high school science, and they were only biology programs. Four out of the 23 programs meet expectations of high quality. So four out of 23 meet those expectations. There's an elementary, a middle, two middle school programs, and one high school biology program. There is one high school chemistry program, the Sabbath Experience Chemistry Program, that is currently under review by Ed Reports. So these numbers are compared to AD reviews and ELA with 41 total programs meeting expectations. 127 total reviews for mathematics with 63 programs meeting expectations. So these trends are similar for the Massachusetts Curate Evaluation Process, which only considers the products that have already been found to be partially or fully aligned by independent reviewers. So the 2016 Massachusetts Science and Technology Engineering Standards, which were adapted from the National Next Generation Science Standards, reflect a significant and exciting shift in, in approaches to science education. Publishers are just beginning to catch up, even though there's a 2016 year on those standards and the national one were before that. So while there is no unicorn curricular resource for science, adopting the resources that we are recommending today is an important next step we can take toward equitable access to high-quality science education, given current research and LPS data. Did you want to jump in there and add something?
So as I said and you saw, we addressed chemistry, physics, and earth science, and I became super excited about earth science, which might shock some people in the room. Several years ago, when the NGSS was enacted, and they asked me to unpack it, or help unpack them, and the best thing they did, we all know, and I didn't coin the phrase, rocks for jocks in earth science, they crunched that into two-thirds of the standards, all that stuff, how rocks and the earth form in all the spheres, if you've ever had earth science. But they added another third, and the whole last third was the human impact on all the things in the first two-thirds. And probably the best class I ever taught was AP Environmental Science because that covers everything. I'm a science nerd. Even the chemistry I got familiar with, that I just denied earlier. And I got excited, so we unpacked those standards, and I loved it. And we, our work, we prioritize the standards. If someone goes through an earth science class, what is absolutely from the NGSS, and we have a Massachusetts version, the national people just copy Massachusetts. We combined some stuff en masse, but it's all there. And then the council, the Resource Council and the Curriculum Council, it's the Curriculum Council, and we've been focusing on resources. In the last three or four years, I've had, I'm kind of one of the few earth science teachers in the city, but once in a while, a new teacher or a veteran gets handed an earth science class, and there's, there was nothing we could hand them, whether it was a map, or prioritize standards, or unpack standards, or resources. So now we have all those pieces, and this is the last piece, where I'm, you know, not, not just for the veterans, but a new teacher who we kind of need, we can give them this framework and these resources, and they won't feel like the weight of the world's on their shoulders. So that's where I come in, and the human impact in Lynn, we have, and our kids don't know, and you might, some of you might not know, we have one of the biggest wooded areas in the state. We have a salt marsh, we have rocky shores, we have sandy beaches, we have freshwater marshes, we have everything, and we all drive by it, and the kids drive by it, and then when I show them all this stuff, they're like, wow, I never knew this was here. And if they don't, if they learn about it, they'll learn to love it, and if they love it, they'll protect it.
Nice.
Great philosophy.
Well put. So that's the end. Skip the slides. Thank you, Dave. So kind of taking a little bit of a step back from the, from the chemistry, physics, or science piece, right, and more in response to kind of the current state of, or current reality of high-quality instructional materials in science, right, how we're not really there yet, we don't have a ton of options to pick from, but acknowledging the important role of high-quality instructional materials in student learning outcomes. This is a pre-K through 12 Advisory Committee that was formed to kind of figure this out, right? If the resources aren't really out there, but this is something that's a need, kind of what are we going to do? So this, this was established in school year 2122 to really kind of determine how to move forward in LPS science, and this committee consists of elementary, middle, and high school science educators with representation from both MLE and special education departments. And so the overarching purpose and goals of this ongoing sustainable committee is really to continue to evaluate current research and needs in LPS science, to, you know, improve our knowledge base and understanding of what high-quality science instructional materials are, review examples of those, refine evaluation selection processes to use in LPS science, use tools to identify resources that should be considered for adoption, and identifying ongoing professional development. So there is a group in LPS that's kind of trying to, meets regularly to figure out kind of how do we move forward and what are our best next steps in terms of science resource, resource adoption. And the work of this council informs subsequent work by curriculum councils at each grade span, so our middle school science curriculum council, our high school science curriculum So through a thorough analysis of LPS science-specific data, current research in science education, and current curricular evaluation rubrics, including the three shown here, the High Quality Science Instructional Materials Advisory Committee identified and defined four characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials specifically to meet the needs of Lynn Public Schools students. And so these characteristics are accessible to English learners and students with disabilities, and they attend to opportunity gaps through phenomena-based and culturally responsive learning experiences. They are intentionally designed around current grade-level science standards, they integrate core content ideas and science and engineering practices, and they support a coherent progression of student learning. They incorporate varied forms of assessment and multiple means of demonstrating standards-based proficiency, and they are usable by teachers and supported with high-quality professional development. So these characteristics continually inform the work in each of our grade spans, and they are the criteria that the High School Science Curriculum Council use to evaluate resources in chemistry, physics, and earth science that we are recommending for adoption today. These are kind of LPS-specific criteria that we used to review the resources. And this visual just roughly represents how the work of that advisory committee informs subsequent work by the curriculum councils in each grade span. The High School Science Curriculum Council, shown in yellow, completed the evaluation process for the recommended chemistry, physics, and earth science resources. So this council first began in summer of 2022. It's intended to be an ongoing council with the overarching purpose of establishing quality reviews of high school science curricular programs and identifying and acting on next steps. The council consists of content area teachers, administrators, and department heads in curriculum, science, MLE, and special education. After the council engaged in data analysis and collaborative learning around the characteristics of high-quality instructional materials, it established a goal for school year 2223 to review and evaluate instructional materials to support equitable access to high-quality science education in chemistry, physics, and earth science. high-quality science education in chemistry, physics, and earth science. This slide just captures some of the data that has supported our goal of evaluating instructional materials in these content areas. I would like to draw your attention to the enrollment trends related to English learners in high school science courses noted on the slide. It is also important to note that there is no consistent core instructional resources for chemistry, physics, and earth science courses across the district. In school year 21, '22, a couple of years ago, I mentioned this in the last presentation, a survey was sent to all LPS science teachers related to the top areas of need at each grade span. Thirty high school science teachers responded, and materials to support differentiated instruction and consumable materials for activities and labs were identified as the top two areas of need. Let me see that trend. And I know, Dave, you had wanted to mention kind of the new teacher piece, but I think you.
Yeah, I mentioned the new teacher piece earlier, but it is very important for chemistry and physics as well. I keep seeing new teachers or even veterans who are new to us, and the fact that we're building this and these, the committee to pick these resources, I'm very pleased at how it went down.
Thus, the rationale for pursuing district-wide resource adoption for chemistry, physics, and earth science is as follows. Identifying resources for these content areas will support equitable access to high-quality science education for our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. Furthermore, these resources will set the stage for further opportunities for our collaborative learning and continued enhancement of the LPS high school science program, including future curriculum development in these content areas. These new resources also lay groundwork for the future development of a sustainable plan for science lab materials acquisition. You'll see this slide a lot tonight. So through the guidance of DUCY's Evaluating and Selecting Network, the High School Science Curriculum Council was guided by DUCY's Implement MA process, and we utilized tools and rubrics developed based on LPS characteristics of high-quality science instructional materials. Our council has worked through the first two phases, learn and prepare, and investigate and select, and is now planning for the launch and implementation pending your approval. The next few slides will outline more of the specifics of the council's evaluation and selection processes. The resources shown on this slide were evaluated by the council. The HMH Science Dimension Programs in Chemistry, Physics, and Earth Science, the McGraw-Hill Inspire Science Programs in Chemistry, Physics, and Earth Science, as well as the Savas Experience Chemistry and Experience Physics Programs. These resources were identified for thorough evaluation based on input from High School Science Curriculum Council members, feasibility of digital integration in the Lynn Public Schools, and accessibility of print textbooks as a component of the resource. Each program includes print texts, digital resources, and professional development experiences. I want to draw your attention to the fact that we did not evaluate a Savas Earth Science program, as there is not yet one that has been intentionally designed around the current science standards.
So that's just an artifact of the newness of the NGSS for earth science around the country, which they assured me they were working on it. But I said, well, it's a little late, but maybe someday. It was great, the way, just so, for full disclosure, I didn't just address the earth science resources, and the physics teacher in the room didn't, and the chemistry teachers didn't. We all addressed each other's resources, because we all brought different angles to the process, and that was probably the most productive thing, because people would see something about the earth science resources that I didn't, from a chemistry angle or a physics angle, and it's all one big thing, so. Again, very well-designed process.
So evidence was collected through council review of the resources, publisher presentations, and teacher input. The evidence for each program was compiled in a rubric based on the four characteristics shown on the right, and ratings for each program were calibrated across all of the council members. Particular components of the resources that we focused on were based on teacher input and included differentiation supports for multilingual learners and students with disabilities, hands-on and digital lab experiences, and options and functionality related to schoolagie integration. So we do want to take a moment to highlight the multiple and varied opportunities that all chemistry, physics, and earth science teachers had in the decision-making process throughout the past two years. Through surveys, interviews, and PLC discussions, 89% of all teachers have had direct input on this process.
Yeah, and that fostered something that wasn't asked for. Teachers within buildings at English Tech and Classical met kind of on their own, and meaning members of the council, who, you know, all schools, all of the three schools were represented, went back to their schools, and through students and faculty who would be impacted by these resources, kind of showed things and got feedback, and then that helped Leah and all, and the council, because I was psyched when they came back, like, oh, I talked to all these teachers and here's the feedback. Beyond surveys, teachers took it upon themselves to kind of get the reading of the room about these resources.
And while we have a smaller number of educators at Fecto Leary and at the Frederick Douglass, they also had a voice in that process, so they're counted in those total numbers as well. So after the council's thorough evaluation, we are pleased to recommend the following programs for adoption. The HMH Dimensions for Earth Science, the McGraw-Hill Inspire Science for Physics, and the Savas Experience Chemistry Program for Chemistry. Each will include classroom sets of print textbooks, three-year digital licenses for all students, and in-person and virtual professional development opportunities. All three of these programs demonstrate alignment to the criteria of high-quality science instructional materials. The decision to pursue resources from three different publishers.
We noticed that, yes.
Highlights the nuances of the different content area standards and educators' input, commitment, and expertise in these areas. With the greatest number of English learners in chemistry courses following biology, the features in the Savas Experience Chemistry Program related to English learner supports and direct alignment to the WIDA ELD standards are noteworthy in the decision as well. While the council is confident in these recommendations, it is important to remember that there is no perfect curricular resource. High-quality professional learning experiences are essential to supporting effective implementation and equitable learning experiences for our students, which is a nice segue into our discussion of implementation. So the current slide shows a general outline of the detailed implementation plan that describes the supports that will be provided to implement the new resources, as well as related teacher actions that will facilitate the continued growth of the LPS high school science program in the coming years. While the proposed resources are pending your approval, the planning to effectively implement the new resources has already begun. The intention to pursue these resources following this draft implementation plan has already been communicated with teachers, so they can leave for the summer with an understanding of how they will be supported with resource implementation throughout the coming year. So over the summer, the High School Science Curriculum Council will meet to continue planning for implementation in the upcoming school year and for the professional development experiences for educators. These PD opportunities will include an optional PD workshop in early August for teachers who are interested in getting started with exploring the resources and planning for the fall, as well as a full-day experience for all teachers during one of the in-service days in late August. Throughout the '23-'24 school year, school-based PLCs and/or department meetings will allow for collaborative planning around the new resources, opportunities to review student work, and compile feedback on the new resources. Anonymous feedback surveys and class visits will support the identification of needs and next steps and the continued growth of the high school science program. Through district-wide science leadership teams, science department heads and curriculum council members will synthesize teacher feedback and implement data to develop an action plan for future years. They will develop expertise in assessment platforms in order to plan for measuring student learning in future years. They will identify core hands-on labs for each content area based on teacher feedback and alignment with priority standards that can be used to support sustainable materials acquisition for high school science. So in future years, science leadership teams will support continued implementation of the resources and the continued growth of our high school science program through the development of district-wide scope and sequences for each content area, plans for sustainable science lab materials acquisition, and ongoing professional learning, program assessments to be used district-wide, and ongoing progress monitoring plans. Now we're just going to turn it over to Dave to kind of close out the presentation by sharing a little bit more about his experiences, and then we'll open up to any questions you have.
Yeah, those close for me. You couldn't tell already. Obviously, this has been a very important process to me ever. Oh, sorry. This, obviously, this has been a very important process to me ever in 17 years, because it's going to affect the students and the teachers going forward in a good way. So I do want to mention, I was the earth science rep in the council, am, it's still going. Jeff Begler represented the physics aspect from Lynn English, and Kat Bates from my school in Classical represented the chemistry view, and then we had Banosha Salamet from Tech, who was a DH, and kind of helped us get the administrative view of things from up on high. And we had Andrea Merriman, who's a SPED DH at my school, and Stacy Floyd, the MLE. So we addressed all angles, and it was great, and we will hope you will like what we proposed. You can note that we picked three different companies, because one of the pressures we were worried about, like, do they want us to pick the same company, because it'll be easier? And Leah made it clear, like, no, we want the best one for each science, and that's how we, all those people I named, that's how we all looked at it, and we came up with the best, so. I think, questions?
Thank you. Member Dugan.
Thank you for the very thorough presentation and the fact you put so much time and effort into the process. I know I'm speaking for everybody, but I, we really do appreciate it. Just the vetting of everything is very helpful to us. Just grade levels, is this mixed grade levels? Who's getting what, ninth, 10th, 11th?
Yeah, so I mean, it's somewhat dependent on the class and the course and the school, but in general, we've got 10th graders taking chemistry, we've got juniors and seniors taking physics and earth science.
Member Gaetley.
First of all, Dave, I mean, Mr. Winchester, can you tell everybody here how you know me?
She always does this to me. I'm only sitting here because Lorraine Gaetley met me, I helped her with an aquarium 18 years ago, and then she dragged me around the admin building and introduced me to everyone, and the rest is history. Thank you, Lorraine.
No, 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 Mr. Winchester, you forgot one very important part. I recruited Mr. Winchester because I was stuck with a marine biology class where I was trying to make it as interactive as possible, and I hunted you down through Kelly's and all of those fish tanks, so that I, I personally could put an ocean water tank in my classroom to show students the significance of that in the classroom. And I think you made a quote here a little late, but maybe someday, I think for me, someday is here with this curriculum, and I thank you very much for all your work.
Yeah, that was a long time ago, and she actually approached a private company I was working for, and my boss said, you can't afford us, but I was his aquarist at the time, and he said, my aquarist wants to become a teacher, and he'll probably help you for free, and I did.
Can I just add to that, Member Gaetley, that I was teaching preschool back then, and I used to drag him into my preschool class with his touch tank stuff to show him that he could teach.
So again, I want to reiterate what I said in the middle school, is that the top survey materials to support differentiated instruction, 60%, and consumable materials for activities and labs, 47%. We need to get that, this done, and we need to get it done soon.
And to that point, we look specifically at the kind of hands-on labs that were offered in each of these programs, and if we have a kind of common resource district-wide, it allows us to develop a common materials list, and then we can then move forward with kind of sustainable materials acquisition.
And then one other thing, hold on, it was here, so. On the textbooks, you'll have one printed per classroom, and then the rest will be on their laptops?
So we'll have a classroom set, so that, you know, every student in a single class period can reference the print textbook and use it as they need to. Students can sign them out, take them home if they need to, but their kind of home base is that classroom, but then every single student will have the e-text accessible for them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure when I was reading through that, that that is clear, and everybody knows that we're getting that for them.
Sure, and Dave just wanted to jump in on these.
So one thing about the e-text, in the age of remote and schoolagie and computers, we made a point of all these resources to look at the digital ebook, and I actually failed some of the manufacturers, because I couldn't navigate the ebooks. I said, if I can't do it, what's a kid going to do? So we act, you know, I'm not naming any companies, but you can see we picked three different companies. It was often based on things like that, the accessibility. For L's, CP, honors, anyone who's touching this ebook, it has to be user-friendly, and if we didn't judge it user-friendly, we kind of gave it an F.
Thank you very much for your presentation, for your input, and for your 17 years.
Member Pena.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question, did you say you didn't get to review the materials from Savas Company?
They didn't, they don't have.
Savas, they're working on the earth science.
The earth science program.
They just haven't gotten to it yet.
With the old standards, so they don't yet have a new program aligned to the current standards.
And I wasn't going to even look at anything that was built off the old standards. It had to be off the next-generation science standard. We weren't going to.
So looking at your trend there, in year 21, '22, 50% of the students were L's, and that's, that must be growing, right, increasingly?
Yeah, thank you. I haven't, I haven't looked at that percentage since that data point, but you can just see the kind of the need across all of our science courses.
Important to have that material for L's.
Yes. Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, Member Capola.
This is sort of a question for the administrators. For us to have this in time for the professional development, and goes for the middle school one, what budget is the purchases coming out of?
Leah, science purchases are coming out of ESSR. They've already been put in.
And they've already been put in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
It'll be here in time for?
It'll be here in time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Dugan.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept HMH Dimensions for Earth Science, McGraw-Hill Inspire Science for Physics, and Savas Experience Chemistry, and also move to the full committee.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Dave.
Thank you.
Now I would like to welcome up Kristin Tobacco and the high school history curriculum. No, materials, not curriculum.
That's where, yeah, that was great, thank you. It sounded like I was being sarcastic. I really, I'd wear that shirt.
First, wanted to mention that although it's not on the agenda, I do have a very, very brief presentation on elementary social studies following this presentation, if you don't mind. So before I begin my presentation, I want to thank the committee members, members of the mayor's office, and our local representatives for all your help on Civics Day. We had over 60 community members visit classrooms to speak with students, and we had over 30 judges at Civics Day and the city, and it was just an amazing experience. And it was just an amazing experience. I'd also like to recognize the civics planning committee, lead teachers, Luke Moss, Jenny Winter, and Jake Selinger for all of their hard work. Civics Day really could not have happened without them. Lastly, I wanted to recognize all of the grade eight and grade 10 teachers for their diligent work on this project from the beginning of the year. I have one of those teachers here, coincidentally. It is a really important project and it's very challenging and rewarding and ours, over 2,300 students who participated are lucky to have U.S. teachers. So on to our presentation. This year, it was time to review the best resources available for our core high school history courses. We have grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, our two U.S. and two world courses. We embarked on this process this year because it's been many years since the last adoption cycle. Also, the landscape of available resources, changes in the law, and an ever, the ever-expanding nature of history and social science as a discipline, and not least of which, one of very few, the very few positives about the pandemic is the beginning of one-to-one devices in Lynn public schools. So it was time to reboot for a new curriculum. As you see, the DESI Implement MA process on the board, we followed that process in this committee. By now, we are all quite familiar with this process, so I will move on. As part of, as part of the learn and prepare phase, I built our resource adoption committee. Team members included history teachers, department heads, members of MLE administration, special education, and our SEL, our social emotional learning department. All of these voices were represented on the team. Our evaluation criteria is two-fold, a high-quality instructional materials rubric and a list of local priorities decided by the committee. For high-quality instructional materials for history, you may not be aware of this, but Ed Reports and Curate do not review history or social science resources or curriculum in any way. Hopefully, that will change shortly. Luckily, an excellent learning company, Inquire Ed, has developed a amazing HQIM rubric specifically for social studies. The five domains of the High Quality Instructional Materials Rubric from Inquire Ed were designed to reflect the goals of National Guidelines for the National Council for Social Studies, the C3 Frameworks, and the roadmap to educating for an American democracy, as well as the requirements of newly revised state standards. You'd find that this rubric reflects many of the domains in the Curate rubrics for other content areas, but goes well beyond Curate in terms of professional development and inclusion of a multitude of perspectives in the content. In addition to the Inquire Ed rubric, the team created a list identifying local priorities that reflect the needs of the Lynn community. Some of the top priorities that we identified that were not included in the HQIM rubric unique to Lynn were supports for multilingual learners and students with disabilities, accessibility to text, for example, tracking that, so you can track the text with a ruler or you can have better quality text for students with dyslexia or other learning disabilities, integration with our LMS, Schoology, teacher and student usability or user-friendliness, high quality and plentiful primary and secondary sources, as well as opportunities for leveled texts, standards-based assessments, and research and writing. We reviewed three top vendors, McGraw-Hill Education, Discovery Education, and Savis Learning Company. We also considered New Zella, New ZLA Social Studies, and the OER World History Project. While the latter two resources had excellent, had excellent features, it was clear that they were not going to meet the comprehensive needs of our district at this time, so we focused on the big three. The review, the review process included many meetings together, including the vendor presentations. Teachers and department heads worked together after school and in PLC to review resources. And I held bi-weekly Zoom check-in meetings during our six weeks of review to share thoughts and questions. I think the most important step in our, that took place in our committee was to have teachers on the team pilot each resource, which with full Schoology integration, thanks to the help of our technology department, with their students. Oh, sorry. I know, I got misconfused. Okay. In early June, we met after the review process and pilots were complete to make a decision. We had both quantitative and qualitative evidence and used both to inform our decision-making. We did a, at our last meeting, we did a quick whip-around of each of our top choices, discussed it with each other, and posed questions. Then we went around one more time, and in the end, the decision was unanimous. I'm proud to announce that our final selection for the U.S. and world history courses was Savis, their U.S. Interactive and World History Interactive Programs. As you can see on this slide, Savis has excellent resource components. And you also got to view some of these resources before the meeting up at the table. Here to share their experience with these features and the pilot process and the adoption process as a whole are teachers, Aino Ahtianen from Lynn Classical and Angelisa Cole from Lynn Tech.
Thank you, Ms. Tobacco. So, hi, good evening. My name is Aino Ahtianen. I am born and raised in Finland and I've been an educator at Lynn Classical for three years. I teach the ninth grade history, which is from American Revolution all the way to the First World War. I teach this year's honors classes as well as three T classes, which is level one ELs. And last year, I also taught the regular classroom. So I was proud to be part of this project, process and the textbook selection that we were able to make. So I piloted this Savis book in my ninth grade history honors class. So I did not pilot this in my EL classes because we do have our own thematic unit for those classes. So I mostly paid attention into the Schoology integration and grade passback, which makes it easier for the teachers to go ahead and do the grading either on Savis or on Schoology, but either way, the grade will transform into one platform or the other, and then eventually to Power School where parents are able to view their children's or students' grades. Materials needed to be easily accessible, as the other communities have already talked about, because we have a large population of students with IEPs or special needs as well as EL students. And that was one of the things that we really paid attention to. And what we really liked was the combination of the traditional readings with embedded questions that students were able to check their understanding before moving into the whole-class discussion or assessments, as well as the interactive assignments that were offered in the book. One of those accessible things that we really loved was that the reading levels can be changed, so I'm able to assign a reading to a student with a higher level or if a student with IEP requires a lower level, I'm also able to do that. So they're able to access the same content, but in different levels. Readings can also be listened if a student prefers audio, and we have headphones available in some of the classrooms for that. We also kept working on together, as Ms. Tobacco mentioned, outside the meetings. So a lot of us worked on this selection in our PLCs. We talked about the different resources. We brainstormed what we liked, what we didn't like necessarily. And pretty soon, it became pretty evident that Savis was the one that we liked the best because it did hit all the goals that we had for a good textbook that would meet the needs of our diaper students. I think that's it for my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Aino.
Hello, my name is Angelisa Cole. I'm a grade 10 U.S. History II teacher at LVTI, coming to the end of my 16th year. I piloted these programs with two CP classes and two honors classes. I spent most of my time piloting the interactive features in primary sources. It quickly became clear that Savis was by far the best product in terms of usability and the quality of resources that were included. Savis also really hit upon each of our local priorities. On the screen, you'll see one of the interactive features from Savis that my students really enjoyed. I got a lot of positive feedback from my students and they also provided a really rich opportunity to engage everyone in academic discourse. My students also loved the diverse perspectives and the primary and secondary sources embedded in the program, as we often see those perspectives left out of textbooks and instructional materials. And then, speaking to the nature of our process, I really enjoyed the collaborative nature and I worked really closely with everybody on the team and especially exchanging tips and navigating the programs with Mr. Donaghy at Lynn English and working with Kristin and meeting with the vendors to follow up.
Thank you, Angie. So now that we have our resource chosen, it's time to discuss our student progress monitoring plan with an assessment plan and eventually full implementation of the resources. Student progress will be monitored by a comprehensive assessment plan that will be designed by a teacher and leadership team this year. This is something that much thought needs to be put into and it requires a real familiarity with our new resources and our curriculum maps. Therefore, we will begin designing a plan in our curriculum committee in the fall of 2023. Hopefully, we'll be able to pilot that plan later in the winter or the early spring of 2024. And we'd be gathering feedback on that, the just that specific assessment plan and reviewing and revising it as we move into the spring and summer of 2024. Our overall implementation plan, you can see on the chart above, you can see we'll begin in the summer, summer 2023, with our curriculum committee continuing to work on our curriculum maps that we started this year, embedding the new resources. We'll also have a full day, we already have this scheduled, our full-day PD with Savis on August 31st, about, with our Savis Realized Platform. We'll continue in the fall of 2023 with our mapping and developing our assessment plan. And we'll, I also plan to have a half-day PD on the election day and service day. In the winter, we, as the committee will continue to work, of course, but we will also have educators begin to pilot some of the district-wide assessment plans that we'll be building this year. And then in the spring of 2024, the committee will review assessment data from students and from teachers and will, will integrate that feedback into our plan. We'll have another half-day of PD and we'll be planned for year-two implementation. I think it's important to take it year by year, so we have to see how the first year goes, gather that feedback, and then plan together as a team for the following year. Throughout this entire implementation process, of course, we will have a cycle of feedback. As you can see on the, on the graphic, we'll begin with educator PD, of course, in August. As we continue through the year, we'll have quarterly teacher surveys. The committee will analyze the feedback on those surveys and put that right back into our mapping and professional development plans. And then we'll plan for the next professional development to meet the needs of teachers. After school, I will also offer professional development for U.S. and world teachers for professional development points. Some of the topics that we will probably do as they are needed are using the platform, standards-based lesson design, supporting our multilingual learners, incorporating writing, instruction, and inquiry-based learning. Consistently throughout the year, they'll have ongoing support from our department heads, who are all on this team as well, and district leadership and teacher leaders. I'm so proud of the work that our committee did and thank them again for their participation. And it's with great confidence that I recommend that we adopt Savis U.S. and World History Interactive for all of our high schools. At this time, I can take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Member Dugan?
Thank you, and thank you for the, again, very thorough presentation, another one tonight. Thank you. Just a quick question about the assessments. Just with the experience I have in my classroom with Savis, there's tests built into the program, so would, will we be using those with the, when you develop the assessments? Or is it going to be something just completely different?
Well, one of the things that our committee focused on was knowing that we would need an assessment plan and that it needs to be developed by teachers and leadership in order to have any kind of buy-in and make it effective. The teachers know their students the best. While I was in the classroom last year, I'm not in the classroom right now. And it's important that teachers who work with students every day are involved in that. That being said, will we use those assessments? I hope so, because, or pieces of them for sure, because part of the wonderful thing about the, this program is that they have leveled assessments. So oftentimes, teachers of English learners will take a, a question on, you know, claim and evidence, for example, and they'll take something from a book or a DBQ or something. And they have to work on making that content comprehensible for English learners. Savis does a little bit of the lift for that, so you can have the same exact standard addressed in a question, but it can be, they provide it, the different items so that some of the, maybe there's three items for response instead of four, or maybe there's glossing of the text when you're, when you're diagnosing, when you're analyzing a primary source. So yes, and I, I want the committees make that decision, so I can't say exactly what's happening.
No, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Member Gaetley?
Hi, Kristin. I just was looking at this, this wheel and I, and I see it, I like what I see, the education PD, the quarterly surveys, the analysis, and the incorporate. But in the center, it says, ongoing support from department head, district, and teacher leaders. And I would like to know who's overseeing them?
Who's overseeing the department heads and teachers?
Districts and teacher leaders.
That would, that would be me.
That's true.
Yes, as Assistant Director of Curriculum for History, I would be forming that committee and we'd be working together to decide, you know, how we're going to support teachers, department heads at each school, they were on this committee, and they are, they have been trained in teacher coaching and evaluation, and we want to use that as a lever to support teachers in next year. Teacher leaders, for example, you know, I mentioned Jenny, Luke, and Jake, they were extensively trained for Generation Citizen, but for the civics project, but we can do the same thing in-house here. And I've planned all of that into my budget.
So you will, it will be like a collaboration?
It's collaboration, absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, that's good. And I really love the civics, I love those civic projects.
Thank you so much. Me too.
I like going to City Hall and I like going to the middle school. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Any further questions? Member Dugan?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept Savis U.S. History Introduction and World History, I'm sorry, I shouldn't put my glasses on. Interactive, excuse me, and World History I, Modern, Interactive as well. And put to the full committee.
Second.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And I'm just going to dismiss my teachers back to their seats. Thank you, ladies. And I'll go on with a brief presentation of elementary. Just one moment.
Actually.
Great. Tonight, I wanted to take a few moments to discuss the long-term vision for social studies in grades three to five. The purpose of this presentation is to let stakeholders, school committee members, principals, et cetera, know what, what we're planning. Social studies in elementary grades is extremely important. The rollout of any social studies education resources will be purposeful and it will be slow. Currently, we are already beginning some of this work through the work with Michelle Winslow in My View Literacy because there are so many rich opportunities for cross-curricular connections in that program. So I will be consulting to, to implement, sorry, to integrate some of the social study standards into the literacy blocks that are already being taught. There are also opportunities for grade three to five teachers to be involved in this work. That will be coming soon. I wanted to talk to, to present this first, so we'll be working on building that team this summer and fall. Support and resources for teachers are available now, and I've been sharing some of those with program directors, I'm sorry, CITs and program specialists and principals throughout the year. I also have a lot of resources available. I also have a lot of resources available on my SharePoint site. Just a little bit of background on social studies curriculum in the elementary schools. I just cited a couple pieces of research here to just emphasize how important it is. Research from the Fordham Institute states that some of their findings were that increased instructional time in social studies is associated with improved reading ability. This study also found that the students who benefit most from additional social studies time are girls and those from lower income and/or non-English-speaking homes. The National Council for Social Studies, in their statement on elementary education, I'm going to quote a small part of this, it says, "If the young learners of this nation are to understand their roles and become effective participants in a democratic society, social studies must be an essential part of the elementary curriculum." This is just a brief overview of what I am, what my thinking is currently. As you can see in this coming school year, don't worry, there's not going to be any rollout. We are going to begin building our team and start looking at the resources that are available, and start to map curriculum in tandem with My View, and we will be providing some professional development at the end of the year, as it's always better to get PD done, you know, as soon as possible, so teachers are ready for what's happening next year. Year one for implementation for grade three, I would anticipate to be school year 24, 25, and then, as you can see down the chart, we'll begin to develop grade four that year in preparations for implementing some coursework for school year 25, 26, and the same goes for grade five, and hopefully, by grade, school year 27, 28, we'll have a fully implemented and partially reviewed and revisited curriculum at the three-to-five level. You'll notice at the bottom, there are some things that have been taking place already this year, as I began my role at last August, and that will continue to take place. One is the integration of the social studies content at cross-curricular opportunities through the My View ELA literacy program. There are going to be multiple opportunities for professional development in in-service days and after school. There'll be coaching support and modeling that can be provided by teacher leaders and district leadership. We'll also have a sustained three-to-five social studies curriculum committee made up of teachers and teacher leaders, and we will, again, do that same continuous feedback loop via surveys, meetings, and implementing, integrating feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee?
I have a question for the previous.
Okay, so, go ahead, Mr. Pena.
So I had, my question, did you say you never got to pilot the material for Ls, for the Savis, in the previous presentation?
Um, I, I don't know what, I'm not sure what you're speaking of, the pallet?
The pilot.
Or the pilot.
Did you said you never got to pilot the material for Ls, for the Savis company?
I don't think that was me. I'm sorry.
It was science.
Oh, science, sorry.
No, 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 they're talking, he's talking about the history, the...
Yeah, yeah, that was my question.
Go ahead.
I was right, John. Did you say you never got to pilot the Ls?
I could have, but I chose to focus on the honors classes, because I knew that the other people who were piloting and had regular classrooms, which is a combination of different level ELs, as well as native English-speaking students, that they were piloting it in those classrooms and getting results from their EL students. The EL classes that I teach are T classes, so level one and below, so for those classes, I chose not to pilot it, because we do have our own thematic units for those T classes that we specifically planned last year to serve those students better as far as it comes to the texts and the assessments.
Thank you for the clarification.
And I just wanted to add to that, that we had seven teachers piloting these programs in a variety of different levels, so there were other colleagues of ours that did pilot them in the T classes, and it is important also to mention that, you know, every class that we have is an SEI class. We have English learners in every single room, so to separate them, you know, is, you know, so we, English learners practice this, and I know Angelisa had many English learners in her class that she piloted with as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the curriculum subcommittee meeting.
Second. Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
I'd like to call the Personnel Subcommittee meeting and a Committee of the Whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, we have unfinished business, they were the job descriptions.
Yes, if you recall, the two job postings that you have were brought to you at our last meeting, but needed to go to LSAA, the Administrators' Union. We have, since then, Attorney Greenspan and I have worked with LSAA to, you know, work through language. There were some minor adjustments, the extended learning position, there were only a couple of changes. Under qualifications, number one, we added "in education," it originally had said just "master's degree," we added "in education." And then, on the second page, under performance responsibilities, we added number 10, which said, "evaluate the effectiveness of the program and desired outcomes," and in number 12, we added, "that runs beyond the school day and school year." But beyond that, the posting is the same as you had received before.
Are there any questions?
I just have one clarification. On the bottom, where it says "base salaries," I know you mentioned that the Administrators' Association, but then it says on here, is that something that's normally, their salary and fringe benefits be established by the superintendent in accordance with policies established by the school committee? The base salary?
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
This is a new position, so I don't, I don't know that we... Yeah, that, I apologize, that should have been taken out, and the base salary that LSAA determined should have been put in.
Okay, and what is that base salary?
$113,550.
That's on both of them?
Uh, I believe so, hold on. Hold on, I believe so, yes.
The same line as in the other posting?
Yes, yes. That will be changed.
I'd like to move the Assistant Director of Extended Learning to the full committee. Second. Approve and move to the full committee. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
The next posting was, or is, the Assistant Director of Curriculum Data and Assessment and Curriculum Integration. There were some adjustments made to this one as well. Originally, it said, under qualifications, for number two, Massachusetts State Educator License and Experience in an Educational Setting or a Minimum of Four Years of Work Experience in Related Field, and it originally said, "with doctorate in philosophy?"
PhD, yeah.
Right. The LSAA wanted to remove that. We, Dr. Alvarez and I, did not want to, we came to a compromise and said, "doctorate preferred" there. And then, there was discussion around educator license being required. In speaking with Mr. McHugh, MTRS requires, any postings that we have, if it's going to be covered under Massachusetts Teacher Retirement, it needs to require a teacher license. And so, we added number three, that says Massachusetts State Educator License in Math Required or Willingness to Obtain That License. And then, the only other change was that this position would report to the Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability.
Ms. Gaetley.
On this one, there is no base salary either.
Yeah, I corrected that, when, when Member Capola mentioned the other one, it's the same thing.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
That's okay, but underneath that, it says, "an offer of employment is contingent," and it wasn't on the other one, but it's on this one? Maybe I got the wrong...
That, yeah, so that was if we posted it before the vote of the budget, so that would be removed anyways, once, if the budget is approved tonight, these positions would be part of this budget.
The other one had three pages, Lorraine, if you just want to look, it is on the top of the third page.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Gasolanos?
The bullet of Massachusetts State Educator License in Math Required or Willingness to Obtain the License, what's the timeframe? When I see, like, willingness, what's that deadline? What's the timeframe?
I mean, typically, it's within that year.
Okay. Why do we use willingness?
So, the whole reason that there was that "or," I don't know, Dr. Alvarez, do you want to speak to the, that second part and why it's willingness?
Absolutely. I think that we brought this up in the last meeting, when we were speaking specifically about the skill set of perhaps a Harvard Fellow or one of our internal candidates that would be willing to take this position to actually enter the Strategic Data Project, and part of that is the statistical analysis piece, and typically, when you do a post-doctoral program, the lengthy, right, the PhD, you are required to do a number of classes in statistics, and so, those are the, that's the skill set that we're looking for to complement and complete this team.
So you potentially could have an applicant who doesn't hold a teacher license, so that is saying, if you're hired, you need to go get the license, is basically what it's saying.
I'd like to make a motion to move the Assistant Director of Curriculum Data Assessment, Curriculum Integration position, and move it to the full committee. Second. Member Capola?
I just would like to have some input. My concern is sustainability for the long term, and we're all aware that we really need these particular jobs. We're at a, at a point where, when we're ranked in the 10 urban school districts, we are not where we should be. And, you know, if ever the point comes, I won't be sitting here, but when the point comes that you can't sustain it, it can't be the teachers that will go, because we have added on a lot of administrators to try to get us back into a place that we had been a number of years ago, and we need, we need to get back there again, and everybody's excited about, you know, a new superintendent, and meeting goals, and really supporting our kids, and turning it all around. We want to have a great education for them, but I think, you know, this is something that is, for now, to try to turn things around, but if the time comes that it's not, we're not sustainable financially, I hope that the people who are sitting here understand that it's always got to be the teachers that are saved in the jobs, and, you know, things like this will have to go, and, you know, hopefully, things turn around quickly, and hopefully, money continues to come to us, because it always benefits the kids, but, you know, it's not something, over the years, people know that, when I've sat here, I've always voted no on administrative jobs, and, you know, I'm not doing it this time, only because I want to see a change, and I want the kids to have what they need, and I want the teachers to have what we need. So, on that note, roll call.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? Anybody? Second, oh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Art of the regular school committee meeting. We have someone who had signed up, who I believe had to leave, and I will call her name just in case, Tamiani Girido, Tamiani Girido, we will follow up with her and get her comments. Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close open mic. And call to order, the second special meeting of the school committee, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Could I please rise for a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Nancy Murphy, retired teacher, passed on June 2nd, 2023; George Mazareis, former school committee member, June 11th, 2023; Christine LeBlanc, former cafeteria worker, on June 15th, 2023. First item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting on May 25th, 2023, the Personnel Subcommittee meeting on May 25th, 2023, Curriculum Subcommittee meeting on May 25th, 2023, 10th regular meeting on May 25th, 2023, and Policy Subcommittee on June 13th, 2023.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Post, I have it. Next is appointments.
And I'm going to defer this to Dr. Alvarez.
Good evening. The first item is for the, our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and we recently had a resignation of Ms. Glenda Cologne. We wish her all of the best in her next endeavors, and one of the reasons to place the interim immediately is we have so much work to do in curriculum in curriculum and instruction and we cannot really miss any beats at this point in time. And so, the stability of that department and the continuity needs to be present at all times. So, I would like to, for the committee to consider my recommendation to appoint Ms. Molly Cohen to that position.
And that's an appointment. Thank you.
The second one is the recommendation for the Special Education School Administrator. I did hand out several documents. One is the corrective action plan for, from MassDessi. There should be another document, which is the summary and rationale for the recommendation of the applicant to the committee. The performance task that was actually given and the response of the applicant during the performance task. And then there's a three-page document that is a glossary of definitions of some of the terms that are in the report of the tiered focus monitoring report that came out in June, it was June 1st of 2023, so very recently. And so, I want to share with you the process that we went through, the executive leadership team to interview both of the finalists that we had. So during the final interview for this position, there were two parts. One part that included four questions of a performance task, and a performance task, excuse me. The questions probe deeply into the vision for the role and identifying priorities, communicating with personnel, engaging with the community, and examples of professional experiences that would support them in this new role. Both finalists were given the same amount of time for the interview, which was 90 minutes. And then, the performance task was as follows, and it was rooted in the corrective action, the actual findings that you have in the report, those are all publicly posted on the MassDessi website, and the link is there. Our corrective action plans for LPS go back to 2013. So there are 10 years of corrective action report, action plan reports stated on the public website. So the most recent one cites that we have, we have the following findings, which are access to a full range of educational programs, which is cited on page 10 of 12 in the report that you were provided with. And then, the second one is student discipline, which is noted on page 11 of 12, and also the link is there for your reference. The applicants were asked to read and review the tier focus monitoring report for Group B, which is universal standards. This was the monitoring period after the initial findings for Group A in 2021. And the tier level three, so this, at this point, we're at a tier level three, and we asked them to provide a plan to address the criterion numbers CR3 and CR10C in order to better evaluate the responses of each of the applicants. And so, specifically, in responding to these questions and discussing the findings for each of these areas in this performance tasks, performance task, Dr. Detulla was selected unanimously by Deputy Superintendent Kim Powers and Molly Cohen, interim Superintendent De Brujero, and Superintendent Zeigney, myself. In response to the task demonstrated an ability to develop an action steps to address deficient categories cited in the report from MassDessi and dated June 1st, 2023, which we have yet to officially respond to. We still have to respond to that since it is very recent. And so, the executive leadership team was provided with a roadmap to address the CR3 area, which again, was clearly identified as the range of education programs. The bullet points underneath that were a number of items that were cited by the applicant in which he would actually begin part of his entry plan and to address in detail how he would follow that corrective action in, in efforts to make sure that we were in compliance, right? And then, similarly, for CR10C, it was addressed in the following manner. I'm not going to read all of these bullets to you, but really, again, was very thorough in the response. And so, after careful deliberation of the committee, including a review of notes on the responses from the first interview, the completeness of answers to the questions at that time, and the professional experience, as well as the qualifications of the applicants, we looked at the fact that there was graduates, degrees in human resources and school psychology, a doctor in conflict analysis and resolution grounded, with grounded theory research on Latin American immigrant voters, certified school psychologist with experience in IEP development, it's missing that, and I apologize for that. He does hold a current emergency special education administrator license with the date of May 31st, 23, and is pursuing panel review for his initial license at this time. He has indicated that he would also enter the Certified Advanced Program at UMass Boston if he was not able to pass the panel review, because that's always subject, obviously, to the group that's reviewing him from MassDessi. So, there is an alternate plan for certification on his part. And the applicant also has over 10 years of bilingual Spanish school psychology experience supporting diverse communities. The committee was impressed with his solution-oriented approach and execution, focus on interpersonal relationships that he would build with our current special education team, and the justice lens of responsibility and compliance that he shared, including internal auditing of individual education plans, and the lens of implementing a student-centered strategic plan to address the corrective action status, which was really what we were looking for. How would an applicant correct the problems that have been cited not only by MassDessi, but we know from families' feedback, right, or teachers that have been occurring for years? So, at this time, I would respectfully address the committee to take his application into consideration for a decision and a vote.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. Questions? Right, Dugan.
Well, I, excuse me, fully intend to support Dr., I'm sorry, I don't want to say his name wrong, Dr. Detulla.
Detulla.
Detulla, thank you. I do have some concerns. The emergency license, obviously, is kind of a glaring one. Just, I feel like maybe there's a little lack of experience, so do we have a plan to just kind of address those issues? I know you talked about he has to go before the, the panel and the licensing could be a bit of an issue, but just internally, just within, you know, our Lynn community, do we have a plan to kind of, you know, help those things along with Dr. Detulla?
Well, he does have the eligibility.
Okay.
We do have Deb Morel, who can actually facilitate that meeting prior to just being on a kind of a waitlist, because that could be December, right, at this point? The other, the internal support in terms of, you know, what does he need? Absolutely. I mean, I think the administrative team and the executive leadership team is willing to support any documents that he may need to, to produce in terms of, as he's going through this process, he's probably going to document experience that he's working, right, for Lynn Public Schools and the type of work that he's doing as well, which would be important to demonstrate that he has the competencies to lead special education.
Okay, thank you. Member Magnolia?
I just have a procedural question, because I'm, I'm not aware of us voting on positions like this, and so, I, I'm just curious as to why we're voting on a position like this. And I, it's just ignorance on my part, if, if someone can explain it.
Yeah, the ed reform statutes that updated all the hiring laws, they didn't affect the special education administrator, so it's still a subject, it's on the recommendation of superintendent at the hiring of the school committee.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to put forward Dr. Oscar Detulla. Did I say that right or wrong?
Yes. Oscar Detulla.
For the job of the Special Education Director. Administrator of Special, Administrator of Special Education.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, thank you, is field trip requests. It's a recommendation of the superintendent.
I so recommend. It's a great opportunity. They'll be going to Southern Maine Community College.
The will of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
And the motion is for LVTI students to Southern Maine Community College, Portland, Maine, August 7th, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
And the second one, I also highly recommend, the students will be going to St. Anselms College in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Make a motion that LVTI students can go to St. Anselms College, Manchester, New Hampshire on August 8th, 2023.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Request to accept a donation from LPD Patch Program for $1,000 to Shoemaker Coach Program. It's a recommendation.
I absolutely recommend. I believe they do this regularly, and we are very excited to accept this donation.
And we would like to invite Representative to say a couple words.
This is the second year we have done this. Last year, we donated $2,500 to the coach program. This year was $1,000. We're looking to get it back up again next year, between myself, Officer Michael Conomo, and Officer Taylor Kulakowski. We've kind of taken over since Lieutenant Larry Wentz, who has retired. He's still involved in the background, but a little less. Had great support from Chief Reddy and Deputies O'Toole and Vale as well. And obviously, everyone sitting here in front of me have seen a lot of faces I've dropped patches off to in mailboxes and whatnot. So, hope to connect a little more with the Shoemaker Coach Program and just see what they've done and keep continuing to raise some funds.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. What's the will of the committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you so much. It sends a wonderful message to our students and families to have the department committed to this cause and all your hard work, and, and we're incredibly grateful. Thank you. Next item is the fiscal year 2024 budget. As you all recall, we've had a version of this budget, had, had several opportunities to have questions, some of which were posed and discussed in this meeting, others were responded to directly. Those answers are, are on the Lynn Public Schools website, under the superintendent's budget page, I believe. And we completed our public hearing earlier this evening. Any questions, comments? Member Capola?
Just that, you know, we know from the previous year, we had difficulty hiring. So what have we done, what will we be doing differently this time to try to fill those? And have we already started?
Yes, I mean, the HR department, I know April Reed has been working very hard to go to, you know, hiring fairs, to reach out to colleges. We're doing everything we possibly can to, to make connections to the places that we can get students. We also are doing a lot of work in building our own, growing our own. I have a little piece in my superintendent report that specifically links to our current students, our seniors, and educational experiences that we're providing them to build their capacity for future. It's hard out there. It's very hard out there, but the department, the HR department is working hard to keep the connections and get as many educators that are qualified. And then internally, we are also supporting the teachers that we have hired that either have an emergency license or don't have a license. We're working to get them on the pathway, provide them with opportunities, especially in special ed. There's been a lot of work with matching them up with a licensed special educator to, you know, for them to document experiences in special ed that they are doing, in the job that they're doing, and helping develop those skills so that they can get the license.
We're also expanding our fellowship program. I think we're going to have over 20 fellows next year that will come in who will be paid and that, and then hopefully, we keep them.
Yeah.
We train them and we keep them.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I do have something I want to share to address Member Capola's earlier comment and about sustainability. The MassDessi does have a report that demonstrates by school district, the average spending of administrators on a yearly basis. The last day they updated it was March 2023. It's based on school year '22, but at that time, the, the state average of spending was $668, $64, any cents?
No.
And Lynn Public Schools was spending $513.40. And so, over a period of three years, it's averaged, operating about a 3%. And Kevin can talk more in detail about what the numbers actually mean, if you have additional questions. But meaning, even with the addition of the administrators that have been approved for this incoming fiscal year, we anticipate that we'll be right at the state average for spending for administrators, not above. So I did want to add that comment, and that is a public document that's generated by MassDessi.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I also just want to thank everyone for their involvement in the, in the process. We had, we had a lot of questions over the course of the last couple months that, that were helpful in us thinking this through, from the committee and the administration and, and everyone that went into the budget. I would also like to thank the participants in the, the public hearing. We all, I think, consider our educators to be a critical partner in this and value their voice in driving this district forward and want to continue to partner to be able to make sure that we are putting our resources to work in our district on behalf of those students that those teachers see and mentor and reach every day. What's the will of the committee?
Make a motion to approve the budget for FY '24.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is any votes taken in the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. Member Gately.
Yes, there was a motion to renew the lease with North Shore Community College for Frederick Douglass to increase to two years.
It's the, it's to, right, we're increasing to two grade levels.
Two grade levels, yes.
Sorry. My brain just shut.
Include nine and 10.
In nine and 10, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next is Curriculum Subcommittee.
There were three votes taken in the Curriculum Subcommittee on the Health Resource, the Middle School Science Resource, and the High School Chemistry Physics and Earth Science Resources.
And is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Is that it for curriculum?
No, we have Personnel Subcommittee.
Yeah, okay, Personnel Subcommittee.
Okay, under Personnel Subcommittee, we approved two- Under Personnel Subcommittee, we approved two job description approvals, one for Assistant Director of Extended Learning, and it's the other Assistant Director of Curriculum Data Assessment, Curriculum Integration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Dugan, the Policy Subcommittee?
Yeah, so, uh, we met on June 13th, uh, and I appreciate people that showed up. I know Brian showed up once for us and Lorraine was there for us. Uh, it is a lengthy process and there's a lot to it. Um, so I do appreciate, obviously Tiffany and Dorothy Presser as well, who's been helping us out. So we pushed forward three sections of our policy committee. I'd like to break them down individually. That way I can answer questions if there are any. So the first was Section I, which is policies that revolve around instruction. Um, all of Policy I's, Section I, excuse me, is going to be pushed forward with the exception of anything with the INJD label. Um, those are all digital resources, uh, and they're currently being reviewed by our Technology Department. And the other one is IKF, which is our graduation requirements. So it was the thought of the committee that we should probably have a larger discussion as a full committee on graduation requirements. Keep them as is for now and then have a full discussion, uh, next year at some point. Um, so that, again, Section I, instruction, um, so I'm hoping for a vote for that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Uh, the next section is Section K, uh, which deals with students. Um, so again, that was pushed forward to the full committee. So we need a vote from the full committee to accept Section K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And then our final section is Section L, which is titled, "The Education Agency Relations." Uh, again, that was reviewed, uh, put to the full committee. So again, looking for a vote from the committee on that one to accept Section L.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I would like to thank, uh, Member Dugan, Member Magnolia, everyone that has been working with them, um, school committee members and others. Uh, can be painstaking work, I know.
Love it.
Going through these.
I do love it. I do love it.
Actually, we do both.
Good, yeah. And you got to get into it, right? If you're going to be there anyway. Um, I can't, I can't tell you how many times, uh, in the last several years, it's been a question of what the policy is. And we, we, we had a genuine problem in the, in the maintenance of the files, um, going back a long time. Um, and so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a great service to this district to be able to clean that up and have confidence, um, in the documentation. So, so on behalf of the committee, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Yes. I think this is the last one. I know we have a meeting next week, but I don't know that I'm doing another report. Um, my quote for this, uh, meeting, "Leadership is not a position or title. It's an action and example." Well, we made it. It's hard to believe we've reached the end of the '22, '23 school year. I can't help but reflect on the many challenges we've faced together this year. We have struggled through many transitions of staff, programs, curriculum, resources, and systems. We've mourned the loss of students, staff, and community members. And as you are aware, we recently had the passing of yet another one of our own, Christine LeBlanc, cafeteria helper at Lynn English High School. This loss impacts not only our LPS community as a whole, as it is, it is never easy to lose an LPS community member, but goes even deeper for the school she worked at, as well as for a school committee member, Gaitley, who is directly impacted by this loss. Christine has been, uh, has been an employee in the Lynn Public Schools since 2015 and brought much joy to the students she interacted with. We certainly send our thoughts and prayers to the LeBlanc family during this difficult time. Thank you to all of our staff for weathering the challenges of this past year and for your contributions to our schools and the important work that we do in educating our students. Thank you for making a positive difference for our students, teachers, and staff. For the first time in two years, our students were a, were able to fully access the opportunities they need and deserve. Seeing our students engaged in cooperative learning, partnering one-on-one with a peer, presenting science fair projects, taking field trips, showcasing art displays, playing sports, and performing musicals in front of a packed house clearly confirm the critical role that our school district plays in the betterment of our community and the intellectual and social development of our students. We have also been able to share in the wonderful experiences our students are part of at the end of the year, awards assemblies, dances, graduations, and promotion events that are all happening, uh, as students move on to the next grade level. It has truly been rewarding to be part of these events. Some news to share with you. Diana Watson, a kindergarten teacher at Harrington Compañeros Dual Language Program, was recently highlighted at the Matt Saul Conference by Allison Balter, Director of the Department of Education's Office of Language Acquisition. She shared how her experience, uh, visiting Harrington Compañeros was representative of the Department of Education's educational vision and was actualizing DESE's blueprint and vision for L success by, en masse, by authentically engaging students, particularly multi-language learners, in standards-based interactive learning experiences that value and leverage students' academic, linguistic, and cultural assets. Uh, congratulations to Jackie Gallo on the incredible hard work she's doing for early childhood education. Lynn Public Schools, I just got this actually today or yesterday, um, has been awarded the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. The amount of the award, uh, is, will be over three years, uh, fiscal year '24, '25, and '26 for an approximate total. And I'm saying approximate because Jackie informed me that it actually is higher than what she thought it was supposed to be, and she just wants to confirm it. Well, we're hoping that they're giving us more than what we thought, but it's $890,925. That's amazing. Uh, Lynn Public Schools is participating in the High School Senior Internship in Education Program, or HISEP, offered through a program from Mass Hire North Shore. The HISEP program is a work-based learning experience in the field of education for high school seniors. As part of this program, we have approximately 37, uh, from our Future Teachers Clubs, who will be working in July and August within our Special Education Summer Programs. They will be paid to work 18 hours a week for five weeks. This is a great opportunity for these students to earn money during the summer months while learning practical experience in the education field. In our effort to elevate multilingualism direct, uh, district-wide, we're proud to announce that 55 high school seniors have met the criteria for the Mass Seal of Bilitracy, including seven Seals of Bilitracy with Distinction. This number will undoubtedly, uh, increase as we achieve, as we receive AP World Language results over the summer. Also, in our first year of offering, um, Bilitracy and World Language Pathway Awards to our fifth and eighth grade students, 287 students, 185 Grade V and 102 Grade VIII will be honored. These students all scored a minimum, a minimum proficiency level of intermediate, putting them on track for the Mass Seal of Bilitracy as seniors. Students are being recognized at their individual schools moving on ceremonies this week with certificates and medals. That's quite an accomplishment there as well. Finally, MSBA Pickering Middle School Building Project continues to make progress. The Board of Massachusetts School Business Building Authority voted yesterday to approve the City of Lynn as part of its invitation for feasibility study to proceed into schematic design involving Pickering Middle School, Sisson Elementary School, and the, and adjacent Magnolia Park. The next steps are to submit the, uh, the following to, uh, the MSBA. A work plan that will need to be presented to the MSBA Board, the date of the city council meetings at which the, uh, proposed project will be considered, and the anticipated design and construction schedules. So we're moving forward with this work. In closing, I want to say thank you to the entire school committee for giving me the opportunity to lead the district during a time that we were in great transition. There certainly was a learning curve in taking on this work. And I anticipate, uh, and I appreciated the grace, understanding, and trust you put in me to get this job done. I truly thank you for the support you gave me. A special thank you to Kim Powers, Molly Cohen, Kevin McHugh, Terry Kalman, Deb Johnson, Mary Jewels, and all of our collective bargaining units, and all of the leadership team for their support to me this year and working as partners in this work. I personally went into this school year with the goal of stabilizing and building a foundation of systems that can be built on. I feel that we, as a collective group, have success, have been successful in this goal with the implementation of our professional learning communities and instructional leadership teams in our schools and district. I look forward to moving in this work and continuing to build the strong structure on the foundation that we have created. It has truly been an honor and a pleasure to be your district leader this year. We look forward to the new school year and we, uh, and we, uh, we, and can work together alongside our new leadership with Dr. Yvonne Alvarez. We all will enter into this new journey of reimagining education and bringing Lynn to a new level of learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Magnolia?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the Pickering Middle School Project. Have we had any response from the state about the reimbursement rate letter that we sent?
Um, we have had ongoing discussions, uh, with various, uh, state agencies. So they, they, that, that, I think that, that letter was much appreciated, uh, and certainly received. Um, you, the, the letter was directed to the, to the treasurer, and we had a meeting with the treasurer and the MSBA team following, and the, the city council sent a similar letter. Uh, and this has all been in close collaboration with the state delegation, uh, and those conversations are ongoing. Uh, we've also, uh, been in communication with the, the Executive Office of Education, as well as, uh, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in Desi, the, uh, Executive Office of Administration and Finance, as well, uh, as the, the administration. So in addition to the letter the school committee sent, um, we worked with a, uh, group of, uh, mayors across Gateway Cities. So, so 15 mayors of, men, managers of Gateway Cities signed onto a letter with this, the, the similar underlying issue around the, the effective reimbursement rate, has it played out differently across the different cities? And we sent that to the Lieutenant Governor, um, and have gotten a response from her. The, the, we do not have a solution yet. And, uh, and as, as I've explained to our school building committee, um, a couple of representatives here, Member Castellanos, Member Gaitley, um, we, uh, are, it, it's getting to the point where it, it's, it's likely going to affect our timeline for the Pickering, uh, without a clear solution. I, we, we, I, I, I think we're making every effort to stay on the timeline. Um, but, uh, there, there is a s- solution that's moving around in the legislature. So at this point, we're going to need, uh, legislation to, to help, uh, work our way out of it. And there is, uh, some language in the, in the Senate version of the budget that could be helpful. Um, that will not be signed by the governor until some point this summer. Um, in the meantime, we continue to press for different alternatives. Uh, there, there's, there's, there's a lot of ways you could, you could get us there. Uh, we, we, we just need to close the gap to get to an effective reimbursement rate of, of, of 60%, you know? And, and on paper, it's 80%. We, we, for the Marshall, we did something like 65%. Uh, if we, if we, if we get there, then there's, uh, we have no problem being able to afford this, this project. And, uh, the, uh, way we get there, I think, is, we, we can be flexible. And so that's, those are the conversations we've been having with the state. Um, I think, I think everyone recognizes it's a real issue. That was certainly the feedback in the MSBA meeting yesterday. Um, a couple of the board members, uh, raised that specifically. And, you know, I, 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 I don't know if this is a, is, this is a, you could say it's a coincidence or not, but there's, there's a lot of overlap at the state level about the involvement in Lynn. I'm probably going on too much, but we've been working on a lot this
I appreciate this level of detail, please. Yeah.
So there's a, the, one of the members of the Board of the MSBA is the City of Lynn's Fiscal Stability Officer. That's a result of the special acts of 2018 that gave the city deficit financing, uh, who, who comments on our, all our financial transactions. So he knows the city's finances very, very well. And so we've, we've, we've gone over this with him over the last, you know, couple of years and leading up to this, to this vote. And, and he spoke up in the meeting to say that, uh, you know, he, he has reviewed our proposed financing and, and agrees with our analysis about what we can afford and how we would do it and, and the risk that poses to us financially. Uh, and so we, we've also been in direct contact with him, trying to figure out solutions at the, at the state level, um, and also working with our, uh, allies, uh, to, uh, try to drive this, this conversation forward at the state level. Um, because, uh, I mean, you, 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 you all know how important this, this school is to, to the Lynn Public Schools, to the city as a whole, uh, and just on its, on its face, the inequity of the fact that we are teetering on the edge of being able to pull it off. Because the state is not following through on the, the system that it created to build schools. Uh, and it's a, it's one of those issues that just hits you right in the face as an equity problem, and yet, uh, it has not gotten traction. Um, and it, you know, in some ways, it helps us to have someone at the state level that knows our finances so well because they can attest to the fact that it's not like we're hiding money somewhere. Uh, and, and, uh, I do, I do think we're making progress there. Uh, we're, we're pulling out all the stops and, and, uh, gonna continue to do that. So we'll keep the committee updated. Uh, we do have a new, uh, Director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The current Director of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, uh, is leaving next week. And so we have a meeting coming up with, uh, that new person, as well as the, the treasurer, and, uh, you know, the state delegation, and hopeful that that will, uh, will be a sign of progress. Um, the, the, yeah. It, it, we're, we're working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great job, Mr. Mayor.
See, no further business?
The motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.